So, welcome to the City Council and the Planning Commission Joint Study Session. The meeting is now called to order. You can call the roll. Ms. Pittner, please.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming. Mayor Protem Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Holgerich.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Cheats. Chairman Tagle.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. French.
Here.
Mr. Sanzico.
Here.
Mr. Shepke.
Here.
Mr. Schoff.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
I did get a call from Councilman Cheats that said that he would be here at six or shortly thereafter. Mayor Protem Henderson got a phone call from Councilman Fleming and he was on the way from Flint at 5:30. Not heard from the Councilman.
I told him earlier, he said he'd be here.
So, we'll wait to excuse or deal with absences until the end of the meeting, if that's okay with everyone. I get to start this evening with just a couple of comments. We need to remind this evening that we have a very aggressive agenda and we have one hour to complete that agenda. Plus, we have to allow for the public comment at the end of the meeting. So, keeping that in mind, I'll keep my remarks relatively short. And then I'll ask Chairman Tom Tagle to say something and we'll turn this over to our City Manager, Brian Kishnik. I just want everyone to know that you can kind of blame me for this joint session because I've been pushing to get the City Council and the Planning Commission together for quite some time. I certainly think that the Planning Commission is probably our most important commission that we have to deal with. So, I think it was important that we get together and start the process because I think we need to meet more often, especially when we have contentious... Wait a minute. Evening. Especially when we have some items that possibly we need to discuss. And I can tell by the audience, there's one going on right now that we know is a delicate issue at this point. But I think it's important that we all communicate better and meet more often. I don't think it's a good way to communicate when something comes to City Council. We take a look at it and we have some issues. All we do is send it back. And to me, that's a terrible way to communicate and I think we need to change that. And I think City Manager Kishnik will discuss some of that when we're done with our meeting this evening and talk about better ways that the Planning Commission and the City Council can communicate with each other. So, having said that, I'm turning the microphone over to Chairman Tagle.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank you for the idea, the generation of the idea, and all of the council people that showed up tonight. I think this is an important first step. As I have talked with Mayor Slater, I think the two bodies can be very strategic in planning these sessions that we see down the road to talk about, you know, things that have happened or things that may be happening so we can look at the zoning ordinance in a way that we all can understand where, why the zoning ordinance was written as it was and if it needs to be adjusted. And I will say, the zoning ordinance is a living document. It does, it gets tested, and it will get changed as we go down the road. So, I think being able to sit around the table, express different ideas, and come to a consensus, like you said, is a much better way to do it than back and forth, volleying ideas back and forth. So, I thank you for this opportunity, as well as my planning commissioners do. And you can proceed.
And if I could just interject, our council is relatively young, inexperienced. Councilman Fleming has the most experience on council. He has eight years, then it goes to four years, then it goes to two years, then it goes to one year, then it goes to zero. So, it's not a lot of experience and I think it's very beneficial to our council that they meet with the commissions and see how they operate, put a face with the correspondence that we get. So, that's also important to us. There's probably two or three members of the Planning Commission that have more time themselves than us combined.
So, that was one of the other... I want council to start meeting with other commissions along with some other stuff because we do need to gain some experience. So, having said that, I'm going to turn the podium over to City Manager Kishnik, who will walk us through our agenda this evening. Brian, do you want us to wait till you're done or do you want us to talk along the way? Or what's your question?
What I think we'd like, and I'll introduce this, but basically you stole all my thunder. How are we going to introduce this tonight?
I'm learning because he always talks before I do at any of the events and takes my thunder. So, payback.
But being that as a mayor, we only have 60 minutes. So, this is really, as you both have alluded to, this is the kickoff. This is step one in a many-evolving step process. There really aren't steps. It's just a process where we believe in working together. And one of the things that the City Council has done over the last year, in addition to this meeting, we've met with the school board jointly because we believe that that working together... The only way to do that is to see people face-to-face and discuss some of the tougher issues that have been faced over the past year or that we foresee upcoming together in a session where everyone can roll their sleeves up and really delve down and drill down into the issues. So, you're more than welcome to ask questions and stop the presentation as we go. But if we could, we know we're under a strict time constraint with this first meeting. And then when we get to the end, we'll talk about next steps and directions from the both boards to determine when we want to have another meeting and what exactly the, or what conceptually the format would look like. So, with that working-together framework and that collaborative framework where we can talk together and ask questions as we go through this, we set forth an agenda. And again, this is just us as staff talking and informally with some members of the council and Planning Commission, but internally to see what were some of the issues we at least want to touch on as we lift off. We'll talk about the master plan. We'll talk about infill development, the Big Beaver corridor and the density there that's changed and the local economy that's certainly changed. One of the bigger issues over the past four months is sober living facilities that went to the council and came back. I'll have a brief discussion on that, as well as the general business zoning district maximum building height, some of the more difficult issues that we've grappled with, and then figure out where we're going from there. So, that's the agenda. And I want to turn it over to Dick Carlisle, who I know is here. And he's going to start by talking about the master plan update and amendments.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of council and Planning Commission. I think this is a marvelous idea that you're doing this. As you know, in 2008, we adopted a very comprehensive master plan for the city of Troy. And when you do something well, you always have the opportunity to do it again. So, every five years, as required by the State Planning Act, you are required to review and if need be, update your master plan. So, it was a very extensive document involving a process that followed up through the Troy Futures Process in 2008. And at this juncture, Planning Commission reviewed it and believed that what we needed to be doing is looking at a refinement and a more targeted approach towards some specific areas. There are going to be three overriding themes of this master plan update. Identifying physical improvements that are needed, understanding some of the demographic shifts, the aging population that I think we're all knowing that we're faced with, and continuing to entice economic growth, which has been an overriding thing really for the past number of years in terms of recovering from the downturn in the economy and enhancing our economic base. So, therefore, there were a number of key corridors and areas that have been, that will be the focus of this master plan update. And I'm sure that there'll be other issues. I want to assure everybody that in the course of this process, I'm sure that there'll be other issues that come up during that course. But certainly, Maple Road has been an area that we've wanted to concentrate on in terms of Rochester Road, Big Beaver Road, and the Northfield area. There'll also be other key issues such as responding to changing demographics that we know that will come up during the course of the process. The, there will be, as there was with this process, there will be an extensive, ugly engagement process throughout this entire period. Obviously, the Planning Commission will be discussing this in meetings, but there'll be more formal public engagement meetings. We hope to hold an investors forum sometime first of the year along Maple Road to see how we can really jumpstart that area in terms of redevelopment. There will be a broader public workshop because some of the issues you're going to hear about tonight will be held through Rochester Road. And there'll also be other specialized workshops throughout the process, specifically for Big Beaver, Northfield area, and other issues that might come up and need to be addressed in this update process. We anticipate this process is going to be complete by next summer. If it needs to be longer than that, that certainly will occur. But that's the target that we've set for completion. Revisions will be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the City Council as we did with this particular process. So, these kind of joint workshop sessions, Mr. Mayor, are a good forum for being able to review some of the findings that we come up with during the course of this process. Now, Mark Miller's going to talk about more specifics with infill development.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, my name is Mark Miller. I'm the Director of Economic Development. And I'm going to talk about two subjects, infill and Big Beaver. The one thing you need to take back about infill is that it's the remaining parcels in the city in their heart. They're difficult, and we're really starting to see that because we get a lot of resident input from that. I'm going to talk in two areas, first being office and industrial. And currently, we have an oversupply with about, an oversupply with minor absorption occurring. That means we have vacancy rates dropping, but only a little bit. We're 20% to 30% vacant, depending on who is measuring it, and there's just not enough demand. And what we need to answer is how can we repurpose and redevelop these? So, we have two challenges in the office and industrial area. We have three major office centers which we need to target. In other words, we have to either fill the buildings or provide other mixed uses in and out of these areas. And then the obsolete industrial buildings, which generally we call Maple Road, but actually extends into the internal areas. And a lot of the industrial buildings are obsolete and really can't be used as they are right now. Infill development. We currently have a Big Beaver retail boom, which we'll talk a little bit more. And I think one thing I call is the MJR Theater surprise. That's, we really anticipated that. It came out of left field. It's a great thing, but it's going to spur other development along Maple Road. And there are some other things that are going to occur that'll help clean up some other vacant properties. Regarding residential, you know, this, the residential properties which are left are very, very difficult. I think the Planning Commission has seen double-fronted lots where people have front and backyards, on roads. It's different. The other thing is the residential demand is strong, but it's strong for traditional single-family homes. So, there's an irony. Right now, America, in Michigan and Troy, is in a time when the largest group of people are the baby boomers. They're aging. And we hear through the real estate markets that these baby boomers want to downsize. There are people at Brent's counter in the Planning Department every day saying, "I want to sell my home and stay in Troy, and I want a different type of product." I'm not saying assisted living or anything like that. I'm talking about condominiums, smaller homes, one-story. Now, we want to find out why they're not providing this product and see if we can get them to provide more of it. Big Beaver Road. Big Beaver Road, we had planned and zoned, in other words, created laws to increase density and provide mixed uses. And we did that through the Big Beaver Corridor Study, Big Beaver Design Guidelines, the Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance. And this graphic demonstrates kind of where we wanted to go. And what you'll notice is look at how tall the buildings are. In many cases, five to seven stories. So, what we have is currently, development is adjusting to a recovery market. So, we have one-story retail lanes. You see a couple of examples that are out there. Now, this is great, we're moving forward, but it's really didn't meet the vision that we had. So, what we see is a recovering market and it's adjusted conservatively, but we are on a road to success. So, the reality is the market forces dictate development, but at the city, we're a partner in that. So, Brent Saubat, Planning Director, going to talk about sober living facilities.
Thank you, Mark. Most of you remember this item. It was initiated by the Planning Commission, who determined there was a demonstrated need for sober living facilities in the city. It developed provisions for sober living facilities. That included a definition as well as development standards for them. The draft provisions are sent to City Council at a public hearing. And one of the slides I showed at City Council was this one. These are the properties that would be available for sober living facilities if the document had been approved as written. So, City Council sent the item back to Planning Commission for further study, along with a list of comments and concerns. Planning Commission took those concerns and revised the language. The suggested revisions included not permitting these uses in R-1A through R-1E districts, limiting the maximum number of residents to 20, and doubling the minimum lot area provision to 4,000 square foot per resident. So, as a result of that change, this is the first slide you saw. And this is basically the effect of the revisions that were prepared by the Planning Commission now. I should also note that concurrently with this item, there was a developer who was interested in establishing a sober living facility in the city, and he appears to no longer be interested in doing so. So, with that, the Planning Department kind of awaits direction on how to proceed with this. And with that being said, I'll introduce Dick Carlisle from Carlisle Women. He's going to talk about the GB zoning district.
Thank you. One of the more difficult issues that the city often has to deal with is the interface between commercial development, commercial parcels, and adjacent single-family properties. This mostly recently played out in the general business zoning district along Rochester Road. The general business zoning district is really intended to serve a regional and citywide retail market. However, due in part to the limited lot depth, as well as adjacent parcels of single-family adjacent to it, there's been some conflict with what's allowed in the GB district and the need to protect single-family residents. The GB district allows a 10-foot front yard setback. Often, properties don't want to meet that setback, so they move farther back to provide parking in front. This pushes the building closer in the back, closer to the rear. In addition, it does allow for 75-foot height in a five-story development. This most recently came to head with the development of the 1-800 Mini Storage Building that went to the Planning Commission. The proposed development was 75 feet high. However, it did provide a 75-foot residential transition in the rear. You did have to work with the developer that you can provide that additional buffer of the landscaping along the rear property line. We will note that this did meet all the requirements of the zoning district and did not require any areas for the development. The timing and the codes, the timing of the consideration of Rochester Road with the master plan process is very unique. As part of the review of the master plan, we are going to review the vision and the intent of Rochester Road. And this includes meeting with property owners, adjacent residential owners, as well as business owners. And the purpose of this is more wide public forum, public open house, so we can get the input from the residents. And as a result, there might be potential zoning ordinance changes that have come and come from this process. I'm now going to hand over to Mayor Kishnik to discuss this.
So, I think you can see in about 20 minutes or less, we're able to, in a land use forum, cover a lot of ground. So, with that, I think we can open it up and we can back up in the presentation. And if we want to talk about any of these issues a little further, they're meant more to many... Everyone here remembers most of these issues. And it's meant to talk about the master plan process and what's upcoming and some of the changing local economies or the local economy that's changing in Troy and how this group, these two bodies, can work together to make that, make that a success. So, if we want, we can talk, we can go back, talk about some of these areas, or we can open up for general discussion. And then ultimately, we would like to figure out when we would like to, if you'd like to meet again, what type of forum you'd like, if you liked this forum, what topics. We would not recommend, this is just a sampling of what we can do here and how we can go through multiple issues relatively quickly. Maybe it's more advantageous to go over a couple of issues and drill down into them that everyone's dealing with. So, I'll leave it at that, Mayor, in terms of where we're going from here.
I anticipate there's going to be some questions and some discussions potentially on each item. So, if you want, we could start with C2, which is the master plan update. And then try and keep it in an orderly fashion. Possibly, we could go around the table. And if somebody has any comments or questions regarding the master plan update and amendment, we can deal with those and then move through the items and then have a general discussion maybe at the end of that. So, if I could, maybe I'll just start with Don on this end. If there are any questions or comments regarding this item, why don't we move around the table and see if there are any for this item.
Well, I believe it is definitely important that we do update the master plan and zoning ordinance, obviously, after that. So, we've had a few preliminary discussions already with the Director and the Consultants. So, I think we need to move ahead on this, if possible.
I certainly agree with that, Councilman Henderson. Mayor Protem Henderson, did you have any comments on that item?
Specific item, you know, the five-story story.
Yeah, I think we'll move.
Do you want to talk about that specifically or do you...
Let's move through C2 and then we'll move down.
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm excited to see that we are going to make a whole section on Rochester Road, revise it. I know in lieu of the construction and the boulevard that's been put there, it's kind of changed the mood of Rochester Road. It's kind of a gateway, you know, for people going up to Rochester. So, it's a big opportunity for Troy to market the community to all of the traffic going past there. So, I think it's a great opportunity to try and set the character for our city by addressing that. So, I'm excited about that revision. Otherwise, I think we have a great master plan overall. I just attended some training in planning and we got positive feedback from Troy's master plan and some of the things that we've done, new directions and stuff like that.
So, can you give me on a master plan update or the amendment?
Well, I mean, yeah, it's nice that we'd be involved in talks on the master plan. I mean, when those updates would come around? Yeah, that'd be great. That way, the public would be more involved also.
I think it's, the master plan moved Troy into, out of the 20th century into the 21st century. It'd been years since it had been updated. Where some things may be a little aggressive, perhaps, but, you know, the nice thing is the state says every five years, we have to review it. So, coming up on our five years.
Yeah, my apologies. I was running a bit late, but in general, I agree. The master plan's a wonderful document. A lot of efforts put into that. But I think it's time to review and look forward to that process. I think it's going to be good.
Yeah, it's a fluid document. So, it's time, and we've used it already very effectively. And now, it's time to look at it and see what works, what doesn't work.
Yeah, I concur with the comments earlier, Mayor. There are a couple of items I would like to incorporate as a part of the master plan, one of which is signage. I am very concerned about that. That has not been addressed in our master plan, but I'd like to see it actually incorporated as part of that. And we've been talking about this for months. And I, several months ago, I approached the body of the Planning Commission. And I mentioned to them that I have a big concern as it relates to the headquarters for Chrysler with their billboard that they've got. And I could see that happening, and I mentioned this two months ago or three months ago, with the top of Troy building. And lo and behold, this week, I just saw a big, nice billboard on top of the Keller Kelly building. And we're going to have all these billboards. That is horrible. That is setting the precedence and the tone of our authority, as far as I'm concerned. That is not what we want, I would think. So, I think that the direction has to come from the council as to what do you want from us and how can we establish and do what we have to do. But signage is important. And I have other items, but to me, that was a sore spot. When I saw that, I really blew up internally.
As was mentioned in the presentation, I think it's important to get the public as involved as possible because Planning Commission and City Council often hear a lot of complaints that go beyond their control. There are problems with, that residents have with the zoning ordinance with the master plan itself. I think that if they're involved in the process, then they'll have less problems with it once it's completed.
Yeah, I guess my, I think the master plan is a fluid document. But my big concern is sustainable development, stronger management, those types of things. We look at this every day. We've come a long way with our sustainable development ordinance and encouraging developers to develop in a more interesting way. But I'd really like to see a state or developed by our engineering department and for further use in a broader sense rather than just in special cases.
I'll pass.
I'd like to step back a little bit. And I think in the future meetings we're going to have, we should explore the fundamentals. And that is how the Planning Commission, the master plan, the zoning ordinance, city-county interplay with one another. And I think until we have a basic understanding of that, I think a lot of confusion that exists about zoning and what the Planning Commission can do and can't do is important.
There's a lot of things I'd like to address, but because of the time involved, I like what was said about the master plan and the zoning ordinances being living things that can be changed and modified for the benefit of a well-developed city, especially to make it a walkable city. My concern is sometimes, as a planning commissioner, I feel that our hands can be tied. We have to, because all the criteria of an applicant, and I believe in applicant fairness, I think that's very important. But to me, one of the main jobs I think that we have to have is protect our neighborhoods. And I don't think that a lot of times, we're able to do that without the threat of a lawsuit. So, I think that we have to have, I worked in construction most of my life. And when I was in construction, codes were minimum. In other words, that's a minimum standard. And a lot of times, we're held to a minimum standard when it comes to our residences for protection and screening. I think that we need to have some way to move a little bit as a council and as commissioners to protect our neighborhoods better. So, that's my concern. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
It's been mentioned a couple of times about resident involvement. And I would just like to make this point very clear, that when we did the master plan, we had a number of public hearings or public involvements. And I hope this time around, we even have, see more turnout. Quite honestly, the turnout was light. And I think a lot of what we hear as a planning commission, they weren't, they say they weren't, people say they weren't aware of the meetings or, and hopefully, and again, I mean, there are state laws about announcing public meetings to the residents. And I know the city followed those guidelines. But I really would like to see residents turn out and let's hear their concerns. And let's, you know, again, see what we can do to, you know, again, one of the drivers for us as a planning commission is economic development in the city. And so that's always something that we try, a filter, we try to look at things when projects come in. How is this going to impact the economic development, the stability of the city, coming out of the times that we're coming out of as a, as a community? So again, I look forward to resident involvement in this process.
I agree. I agree with Tom that it is vehemently important for this council to communicate what we want from the planning commission. You can't come here today and complain about what's happened in the past if you're not willing to step forward and be part of the process and be part of the communication. And as we move down, we're going to see when we get to the infill development, how important it is even more today than it's ever been that we all communicate what we expect, the Rochester Road, or whether it's the issue that's, it's at the front today. When you see those maps, as we did in the sober living map, that's what jumps out at you. That's, that's what I think we need to see, that's what the residents need to see, that's the impact that we need to see. When you make a change and you allow that to happen, when that map jumps, map jumped out at us, we have to do something about that. So I think it's our job to make sure that we communicate much better with the planning commission. So that is our intent, and that's why we started this today. And that will take us to the infill development. And we kind of beat that, beat that up a little bit. We understand that that is an important part of what's going on in the city. That's all we have left. And rather than go around the table, that seems to be taking it. If anybody has a comment on infill, please let me know, I'll call on you and then we can move down. Because some of these other items, I think, may generate some more discussion.
Mayor? Coming back to the idea of resident input, it could, may behoove us to do targeted communications inviting specifically people from areas that are adjacent to what will be affected by any revisions to the master plan going forward. We put out widespread word that there's a chance to look at the master plan, and I suspect there's people who didn't realize that really mattered to them. They don't understand that it does. I think back to my Delphi days when we were going to build those two front buildings, we sent letters to those residents and said, please come and see what we're talking about. And they showed up. If they had just seen an article in the newspaper, I don't know that they would have. So it might be that we need to build into our processes on behalf of our residents and the stakeholders in the city, you know, a communication plan that targets people who are going to have a vested interest and are going to have input belatedly because they didn't know they needed to speak up earlier. And that could just be part of the challenge going forward, specifically reaching out to those, those folks and letting them know.
Just a comment before we continue. There will be a public comments section after we're done speaking. And if you intend to speak yet, that you, you must sign up at the podium to be called on later this evening. Having said that, is, any other comments on C3 infill development?
I think one of the things that, I don't know if it was, who made that presentation? Mark? When we first did the master plan, we had visions of, for example, Big Beaver, what infill would look like. But as a city, when developers are coming to the city and say, this is what I want to do, I want to improve this person's property, it's hard for us to say, no, that's not quite what we want.
Right.
You know, especially in this time. So I think Mark's comment about we have to take, now take a look at that and see what, okay, how can that now be developed into a new vision or an altered vision, if you will, for those, for those areas? Again, it's a living document.
It's a living document, it's a good point. I think we all knew when this document was completed and it was, took so long and the work that was involved in it, we all knew that it was going to have to be tweaked as we moved along. We knew that. And, you know, I don't want to speak for all the residents and the ones that are here, but, you know, I certainly think that many times the residents, they, they think that we're going to do our job and they don't, they're, nobody would ever think of doing something like we're talking about doing, you know? So that's why sometimes they don't get involved, is because they don't think, oh my gosh, they would never do that to my neighborhood, you know? So it's a, it's difficult. It's frustrating for everybody. But the important part is that if we get something that needs to be tweaked, we're going to tweak it. And that's the message. That might not be good for the people that are affected today, but I think as a whole body, if we see something that needs to be fixed, we're going to fix it. C4 is the Big Beaver Road density, and I think we're all very cognizant of what's going on in Big Beaver with the new development and.
We've kind of gotten something we didn't expect, and I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but what was originally expected to be much larger development is retail development. And several of the retail facilities, because they are set close to the road and the parking is in the rear, have decided to put covers on the entire Big Beaver Road window side. And I have friends that work at the AT&T store at Somerset, and they keep being told by people that, well, you're advertising that the new AT&T store's open, but it still has all the windows covered up and it's not open yet. And this is something that was nigh anticipated and was not what was desired or expected. So there again, I think we need to go back and adjust it a little bit. And because two of the stores in that one strip mall have a majority of their Big Beaver Road front end doors covered up, and it looks like they're not even open for business yet. So that's not a good thing.
I agree. Any other comments on Big Beaver density?
Well, one, one thing we looked at with the Big Beaver corridor study was the mass transit. And I would like to get into that deeper later, but I just want to bring that up. I know the smart system, they were talking about a bus system that would, would trigger traffic signals as it went through for a higher speed public transit, actually all the way from Metro Beach all the way to Troy. So I would like, again, maybe working with Oakland County, just because it's their road, see if we can't focus on that and how that affects the build out of the Big Beaver corridor.
I know that's a plan with the governor, high-speed buses and transportation and, not to get into the transit center issue, but hopefully, when those doors open, there'll be a lot more discussion on how that can benefit Troy. Any other comments on the Big Beaver density?
I'd like to make a comment on it. You know, we, we have this study done. And I really think that we're not following the study and we're, we're actually talking the talk, but we're not walking the walk, as far as I'm concerned. The study indicated that we wanted to develop some canopy trees and points of destination. And we wanted to create the, but we have 45 mile an hour posted signs. People are driving up and down 50 miles an hour, 55, but we want the walkability. That's very difficult to do. And I understand that we don't have that much control over the county, but I also know that Birmingham has the same problems, but they seem to overcome that. We should be able to overcome that. You know, traffic is not the problem here. It was six o'clock, I was coming there, I was, you know, it was traffic jammed, you couldn't go 50 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour. So our traffic is not the issue. Traffic is actually at the five o'clock or at the break hours, but that's, that's not the point. The point that I'm really after is that I think we have to actually do something other than have highway lighting, a continuation which we have on Big Beaver. And we just did Rochester and renovated that, and it also has the highway lighting. Instead of having the ambiance and create that ambiance, we're having problems. And as far as the council is concerned, you're the people that have to buy into this program. And you're the ones that have to actually help us as planning commission, develop what you want. And those are the issues that I think should be really addressed, perhaps at a later conference and a later time, but there are these little issues. We need support, I think. And we have to get buy-in from you and from, of course, the city manager as well. He's the key. But I, I think that you're the ones, so that staff can do what their job can be.
I agree with you, and that's why we're starting the process today.
Well, I hope it continues this time.
Well, it will as long as we're wrong.
But I will say this.
And you know, just to, you know, the DDA issue, you know, the problem with not being able to do any more within the district with the district money, I think stifled some of, some of those Big Beaver corridor ideas. And that's something we're going to have to live with now for, for quite some time. So maybe we need to revisit that whole issue again, knowing that the DDA is stifled in being able to spend money in the district. All we're going to do is pay off debt now from, from now until well past time gone from here, so.
Two points I just wanted to make, because that, or there were a lot of people that really participated, I'm talking about the general public, during the last session. And I know that, you know, that Mark did an awful lot, Miller did an awful lot to get that as long as, along with, along with our consultants. But the other issue I wanted to make was Phil brought up an interesting point, which is also my sore spot as well. Phil and I, we need engineering to get involved and to be a part of the entire program. And we seem not to be on the same, same page. I mean, we're not. And, and that's the important thing, is we need you to be our leaders and tell us what you want. And hopefully be a part of and buy into this program. We know what we like to do.
It's a point well taken, and that's three times I've heard it, so we're going to pay attention to that. We are. This is a start of the process. If we don't continue this, then hold us responsible for that, please. C5 is the sober living facilities.
Is, that is now that the developer decided to leave town because we didn't respond fast? That's basically that where that's at, no?
I think that's, that's where it's at, but.
My understanding that we raised.
The sober living, is that, they decided to move on, right?
Yes.
So we're not going to be discussing it any further until somebody comes back and tries it again?
That, that particular applicant has decided to pick his efforts elsewhere.
But I think it is important to note that one of the things that probably drove them away was the increase in the land area that per resident, we doubled that. So that's one.
And I think if I could just quickly, Brian, just real quickly, if you could, could you put the map, could you put the map up there for C4?
Just pass it.
And quite frankly, I think this is something that almost needs to be done when we're going to start making changes that are going to have some severe effects on residential areas. And quite frankly, if this map would have been devised for the issue that you're going to hear this evening and your, your planning commission, and you could see where they possibly could put assisted living in a subdivision close to a subdivision. This is what you need to see. Because once we saw this, we said, no way. No way should we allow this to infringe upon the residential areas. And then if you could show the next one, this is what happens when you, when you take a look at something and you say, we need to change this. And we can all live with this, but we couldn't live with the other one. So I think we need to do this more before we start making changes. Can I call on Brent?
Yeah. When I did my presentation, I tried to be as brief as possible. So where we're at with this process now is, as I indicated, planning commission heard your comments, considered the maps that we, that we've talked about. And now we're at a stage where we have draft language that could go back to city council for consideration, that has the effect of, of limiting the parcels that could be developed with sober living facilities, as you see there in green.
Well, I think, I think we need to bring that back. I, just because somebody's not going to build today doesn't mean they're not going to build tomorrow. So I, I encourage you to bring that back to us because, and that's the communication I think that we need between council and planning commission. That's exactly what we're talking about.
I was the only planning commissioner to vote against the sober living operation, or the revisions and the recommendation to you folks. I could not support a change in the language for a type of institution that was not recognized nor controlled by the state of Michigan. It was just like an organization that decided to, to spring up and they're going, well, we're, we're going to get state recognition. As far as I know, the state still has no guidelines or licensing criteria for sober living facilities. And I'm going, why would we change our ordinance to allow an institution in our state, in our city that isn't recognized by the state? City council's been sitting on daycares and group homes for years that the planning commission sent up, and there's been nothing done. And they both have licenses with the state. I don't know why we would change our language to include organizations that are not recognized nor controlled by the state in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I think we're just trying to be proactive, quite frankly. And if there is something that you've sent up to council in years past, this is a new council. I would encourage you to, to think of us as a new council. And if you think there's something important that needs to come back to us, then we encourage you to do that. Please do that.
Yes, there was a comment I would, I'd like to make on what Mr. Schultz said. One of the things with the assisted living and memory care units, like in this 92 unit development, these are not regulated by federal, any federal or state either. So that's another concern that I have.
We have almost a little over 10 minutes, so I know the JB, the general business zoning district is important to quite a few of us on council. And any comments about that at this point? I mean, I, I personally like that we're looking, looking at changing that, and I think we do need to change that. And I'm encouraged that we're, we're looking at doing that. Because that's not the Rochester Road vision that I, that I have. I don't think a lot of people have that vision for Rochester Road. No, I, I have a vision of Rochester Road being, you know, restaurants and small business and retail and not, not that type of facility, quite frankly, but we can talk about that more. But I'm just happy to see that we're, we're looking at changing, changing that, especially for the residents to back up the Rochester. Here, Phil, Tim Henderson.
Yeah, the height issue, I want to bring up specifically the storage facility with you, I think retail is really what that, you may have put more of those on 16 mile. I, you know, I don't think any one of us would want that. There are plenty of other places in the city that those could survive and, and they don't need the walk-in traffic and that sort of thing. We ran into this a little bit with the hotels at the last meeting, the height issues that is. So we certainly need to look at that as it relates to adjoining properties and residences.
Any other comments on Rochester?
Yes, on that storage facility, that's something that we voted for. We supported on the planning commission, but it, it broke my heart and we, and again, our hands were tied. It met all the requirements, and if we didn't vote for it, the city would be liable. So we had to vote for it. And again, I don't like a process where we can't protect our. And again, I don't like a process where we can't protect our residents and we're, our hands are tied and we're threatened with legal action if we don't pass it. So, you know, you like to be fair to the applicant, but golly, this process has to be more flexible, has to be more flexible.
Just a counterpoint, I think that the residents are protected with the master plan, and if they don't come to the public hearings and voice those concerns, then what else are we supposed to do? We don't want to put the city in a lawsuit or anything like that, and we were, you know, many of us even asked specifically to the city attorney representative on the commission, you have to, you know, you are required to vote for it unless you have some strong reason to not vote. You know, what is it that, in the ordinance itself, that would not, you're actually just tied, you're compelled to vote because none of us wants to see the city be in soon?
Councilman Teague?
Just going back to the master plan update and amendment, I think we need to be honest with ourselves. Not everyone is going to go to the hearings, not everyone knows when the hearings are and so forth. I think part of what I encourage you to think about are those citizens that simply look around and say, this is a residential area, I assume I'm going to have other houses built in my neighborhood. Just like I took a look at the, you know, the planning and so forth and assumed as much. What I think concerns people is when they're surprised by that, oh, this can also be included, and I would encourage you to simplify as much as possible so people know what they're buying into when they buy their home or whatnot. And I think that's, that's the basic concern that folks have about the assisted living and with the sober living and things, because they look up on their map and they say, for crying out loud, I thought this was going to be a single-family home or something along those lines, and so predictability is what the residents are after when it comes to what's going to be their neighborhood, and I think that's something that's important, and I don't think, that is, I think, the number one reason that people complain sometimes about the developments that happen or approach city council or whoever, because they don't feel like it was a predictable decision, whether that's true or not, but that's, I think, their basic concern, so.
We got about five minutes, Councilman Harrison.
Go ahead, that's all right. I just want to make a quick comment. You know, it's our job to protect the citizens, you know, there's no way that anyone in that neighborhood would have bought a house within the last five years knowing that a five-story monster was going to come up there and block out, you know, their sunset, you know, I just, it's our job to protect those citizens.
Just one comment. My feeling is anyone that buys a house adjacent to a major thoroughfare that has business frontage and doesn't think that at some point what's there might change, they're, I mean, buildings get torn down and new buildings get built, and if someone is the first lot off a commercial thoroughfare, they know that it's going to be commercial the rest of their lives, it's not, it's never going to be a residential property.
Well, when I asked to have this meeting, this was long before a couple of these issues came up, and we don't have really enough time to really debate this issue at this particular table, because we did set one hour and you have a meeting at seven o'clock. We could talk, I think, for another half hour. I certainly have a lot of points that I would like to make about that particular issue, but we just don't have the time this evening to do that. So we're going to have, we're going to have to move forward, and I'm going to have to ask City Manager Kishnik to wrap this up, and we need to give the residents a couple minutes each at least to speak this evening.
As always, this is my favorite part of the meeting, where I try to synthesize what everyone has said, how much traction is going to be. So I heard simplify and be predictable, balance the neighborhood, protecting neighborhoods with economic development with more emphasis on protecting neighborhoods. But anyway, I did hear we probably should meet maybe in two months, not go every quarter, that might not be enough for the first year, so maybe in two months, same time, let us an hour format, and maybe only have two issues maybe, is what I was hearing. Master plan and GB maximum building height would probably be the two issues that I heard talked about the most, if there's disagreement or another...
Master plan's a big one. I mean, that's probably a couple meetings in and of itself, but not for sure.
Yeah, but maybe if we did a primer, you know, got the conversation started and then delved into the building height more...
Well, I mean, if you're, if we can look at specific issues, when you said master plan, I didn't know if you meant...
No, I meant just like base...
Item of the master plan.
Yeah. And then have a general with a more specific issue, which is building height, so we can kind of talk in philosophic terms in terms of the community and master plan and what the first part of the process, and get that kicked off, and then the building heights. Staff, you, if everyone, if you disagree, it's okay.
The next meeting will be much, much better for us, this was just supposed to be a kickoff meeting for us, so the next one will be more important. We have five minutes, and I have five residents that wish to speak, so please, one minute per person, and if somebody goes longer than one minute, it's going to affect who's last, okay? So Kathy Mills, please, do you want to speak?
I'm sorry, me?
Can I just come up to the microphone?
Just tell me when my time is up, because I think everybody's comments are important. I don't know, is this on?
It's on, just go ahead.
It's a recorder.
Okay. Predictable, that was a great adjective. What happened regarding this assisted living facility wasn't predictable. One of the council member mentioned to me in an email today, the investment in property and project costs were made by the landowner under the premise that he could use the land as he intended. Well, well, well. My response is, when we purchased our property four years ago, 10 years ago, 40 years ago, we bought that property looking at the neighborhood we were in, and we knew we were buying single-family homes, and this neighborhood was the neighborhood we were buying for our future. And that property owner, the person who's going to build on this property, bought his property in 2001, when permissive use of, use of language wasn't even in the picture.
Ms. Van Berne?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, planning commission executives, and other city executives. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The deputy Cindy engineer slash traffic engineer, Bill, sent an email to my neighbor, and the gist of which said that they, you know, looked at an 80-bed proposed senior living facility in, on Livernoy near the Zion Christian Church, and it was found to generate 10 to 13 extra trips, you know, in traffic at the peak hours respectively. But based on the services that will be provided at the 92-bed senior assisted living and memory care facility that we're talking about at Square Lake and Adams, there'll be more than that in employees alone working at any given time, but the real issue is that the proposed facility is not just for senior assisted living, it is going to be for, quote, "memory care," and then it's confirmed that more than half of the residents will be Alzheimer's patients, which means they'll need considerable, quote-unquote, "medical care" like psychiatric care, and according to current laws, this type of care is not allowed to happen on-site in an R1A district. So more than half of the residents will need to be transported off-site regularly and frequently.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, last night, I thought you said that you, if it were up to you, you'd deny it, but that it's solely up to the planning commission.
It's very frustrating for me. Leonore Paxton?
This will be very quick. The gist of the meeting is that the, there's going to be a change in the way the council and the planning commission deal with residents and these sort of issues, because it wasn't, you know, this, that, and the other thing, and there's a gentleman who's afraid of a lawsuit to the city and so on because of what has happened. I just need to tell everyone, and that it's the residents' sort of fault that we did not get involved in this at the first, at the beginning. I have to tell you that the very first time I ever was aware of anything like this was upon contacting the planning commission to say, to talk about the Sanoco pipe thing that's going on on our corner as well. And when I ask, why weren't the residents notified that this might be going on, I will just tell you, folks, that the lady told me, we don't have to. It is, it is not in the law that we need to, you know, we need to inform our residents. So this is why we're all here. No one was informed at all.
Denise Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I didn't get to speak with you last night. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I agree with what everyone has said so far, but just to add to the comments, you had some great comments tonight about how are you protecting your residents? How are you? How are each and every one of you protecting us who are buying homes in Troy with the opportunity of an assisted living facility on the corner? Understandably, these are great facilities, but is this really the right place? Consider for a moment, do you want to live by a facility like this? Do you want it in the middle of your subdivision? How about next door to you or lights, like right across the street from Terry Adams? I'm glad that we can talk about it now, and we do get the opportunity to speak. It is very unfortunate that I sit here and I see a council and a planning commission saying to me, a resident who's concerned, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do. We can fix it in the future, but we can't right now.
Charles DeBorden?
Council members, thank you for the time I have to come up here. There are four points. Traffic is one of my mainest issues that I have with this whole development. I think you need to take a really good look at that. I believe that it's going to be a nightmare on that corner, as well as Sussex on the back. The second thing is, the property adjacent to this is a little bit larger, the elderly lady who owns it will probably put it up for sale or sell it within the next few years. I'm sure that this company has looked at that, and if you make a precedent to let this get built, what are you going to do when the next property is there and they want to develop on it? And what's, what is the traffic situation then going to be? Third safety concern of the pipeline, you know all about it. I urge you to at worst delay your decision on this. Do not approve this.
Thank you, that's the list I have this evening. Unfortunately, we have a very limited amount of time, so I'm going to have to adjourn this evening. Thank you all for coming this evening. Have a great Thanksgiving and look forward to it.